...meeting to order this morning. All right, I'm gonna recognize the county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on last night.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, first item on the list is White City Boat Ramp. Mr. Attorney, he'll have a large part in on this, but the issue at White City, we had damage done to the dock. Barge hit it, barge out of Louisiana hit it. The attorney can say it better than I can, but been dealing with barge company and insurance company and we've, hopefully we have a meeting set up next week with them. But we've already had a tournament or two, fishing tournament or two at White City. It's unsafe. People continue to go across people on that dock that's sagging down. And we need to get to the point, we want to remove the dock, keep somebody from slipping and falling on it, but we don't do something that's going to hinder us from collecting money from insurance company. So, Mr. Attorney, he's got some recommendation, a couple of recommendations for you to consider to allow us to move forward in negotiation with the barge companies, insurance company. You know, hopefully they'll be here next week. And so we go ahead and get some, some resolve to that issue. It's unsafe and we need to remove it and we need to build it back. And I let Mr. Attorney fill in the details on it, but that's where we are on it.
Morning, Commissioners. Just to give you an update of where we're at, as Mr. Lowery had updated you about a month or two ago, our initial offer from the insurance company for the barge operator was approximately $7,300 for their repairs. And since that time, we've provided them a structural engineer's report from the county indicating the structural damage done to the actual dock and boat ramp. We provided that structural engineering report to Great American, the adjuster handling Creole Chief's claim. And right now, they are tentatively scheduled next week to meet out there with their engineer as well and their regional veracclaim representative to review our report and provide us ideally a revised offer. I provided them a demand of $53,000, that's our quote from McCormick, our lowest bid that we received to restore it back to its original condition prior to the accident. As you heard, Mr. Butler indicate, the condition of the boat ramp, despite the county's efforts in keeping the public and aping and putting signage and what have you, is an unsafe situation. So what I'm asking for this morning is your conditional authorization to move forward accordingly. Presumably in the next two or three weeks, we need some authorization from you as a commission and direction on which way to go pending the outcome of next Monday's inspection with the insurance carrier. If it's an unsatisfactory response, we are asking first for a conditional approval as of November 17th to authorize Public Works to close that area and to begin the removal and demolition of that boat ramp for the lack of obviously funding and the unsafe condition. And then I can get into the additional votes, but I want to take them one at a time and answer any questions that each of you Commissioners have. But that would be the first recommendation and conditional approval that we'd like to move forward as of November 17th pending an unsatisfactory response from the carrier, funding McCormick to fix the dock as we bid it out.
Let me, Mr. Chairman, to move forward with this. Okay, have a motion on the floor. A Commissioner, McLemore, we have a second. A Commissioner Smiley. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone from the audience concerning this White City Boat Ramp? None? Any opposition? Opposition? Motion passes four and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
With, with that being the most pressing issue and obviously that with that authorization, the county administration and Public Works will move forward accordingly. The Monday after next, they'll know how to proceed with that affected area to make it safe and shut it down and remove the damaged area. It also gives me the ability to notify the carrier for Creole Chief and notify them of the county's next steps. I believe we've provided them ample time to respond to the county. Actually, an abundance of time and having to date received an unsatisfactory response and offer from them. I'd also like your permission to move forward as of Monday, the 17th of November to file suit against Creole Chief, the operator of the barge on behalf of the county for the damages incurred on behalf of the county.
Let me, Mr. Chairman, move forward. Okay, have a motion by Commissioner McLemore.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smiley. Any other board discussion? Anyone from the audience? Not? Opposition? Motion passes four and oh to move forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the third item, now that we have those in place, would be to provide the county the conditional acceptance, one of Great American's offer if they do come back with one after their inspection next week. That's satisfactory and meets the county's cost requirements to give the administrator the ability to negotiate and accept that payment from their carrier, which would then not necessitate the county to go in there and do the steps that you've already authorized, but in fact, give us the ability to negotiate a contract, secure the proper insurance from the marine contractor, longshoreman, what have you, and get McCormick as the low bidder, the funding and the approval to move forward. And I'd ask for your acceptance to provide the administrator the ability to have that pending the outcome of next week's inspection on the dock.
Some more.
All right, hello.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smiley, second by Commissioner McLemore. Other board discussion? Anyone from the audience? No opposition? Motion passes four and oh.
Commissioners, just, just to give you some background again and refresh your memory because I know it's been a few months, but there was three bids that were turned in for those specs. There was an H.G. Harden at $65,945. There was McCormick, which was the low bid at $53,140. And the third was a non-qualified response from Kathy Construction. So that, your authorization to move forward if we get the funding. Alternatively, if we don't receive the funding and an appropriate offer from the insurance carrier for the barge operator, I'd ask for your vote to conditionally reject all the bids formally that had come in. Obviously, we will not have the funding to pay McCormick to do those remediation. So we'll need an ability to reject those bids. You've already instructed Public Works on how to proceed on the 17th. And then we will come back here at the end of the month and ask for further direction on how you want to move forward with your, with that area. And obviously, take into consideration and your thoughts on the funding of any kind of remedial work as I pursue a suit against the operator of the barge.
Motion by Commissioner Smiley, second by Commissioner McLemore. Any other board discussion? Anyone from the audience? The opposition? Motion passes four and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Butler.
Mr. Chairman, next item is the ACHA Lip Agreement. That too, Mr. Attorney needs to explain to you what we need to do. As a request for some additional money that we don't have, that Mr. Attorney explained that, we need to go with it.
All right.
Commissioners, you have a, another Lip Agreement from ACHA in front of you. This agreement last year was approved by you all for an ACHA match of $417,000. As you'll read paragraph number one at the very top, it reflects an amount of $462,000. The agreement provided to us last week from ACHA had the old amount, which is about $50,000 less than what we've pledged to Sacred Heart on an annual basis. We received this agreement last Tuesday afternoon. And what we now need to do is get your approval, consistent with your memorandum of understanding that you revised with Sacred Heart three years ago. You reduced your pledge of your sales tax on an annual basis down to that $462,000. ACHA had it at 417. We've made the revisions. It accurately reflects your annual pledge to Sacred Heart. And then the payment schedule down under paragraph two shows your payments from your half-cent sales tax on a quarterly basis. I'd ask for the Commission's approval to have the chairman execute this agreement so we can provide it to ACHA and send it up with the accurate and appropriate stated amount.
Let me, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner McLemore.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smiley. Other board question? Anyone from the audience? Opposition? Passes four and oh.
Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, B and F are along the same discussion. If I can ask respectfully for you to, if we can continue on with F, we can continue to talk about the half-cent sales tax.
All right. I correct E and F?
B.
B, okay.
And F, so we can go right into F.
All right, we'll do it.
With regards to the Health Trust Board, as you all recall, Mr. Brissette, who's the chairman of your Health Trust Board for Gulf County, had signed the resolution, I believe it was back at the end of August or early September, authorizing and approving the Health Trust Board's pledge of your surplus sales tax that you currently have with the CFO and the clerk's office. Your request was for $70,000 of last year's fiscal year and $70,000 for this fiscal year from October 1st moving forward. The request today is for your authorization, if we can ask Ms. Carrion and Ms. Norris's assistants, in transferring those funds now from your sales tax surplus over to the operating, it was a pledge towards the Gulf County EMS. And I'd ask for your authorization and request that those funds be transferred for last year and this. I'm not sure, Ms. Norris, if you have any additional requirements for that transfer other than the approval that's already been put in place.
Seventy or 140?
It's a total of 140.
Okay, so we're doing both years?
Last year's and this year's, yes.
Need a vote on that, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Let me, Mr. Chairman. All right, thank you. Motion by Commissioner McLemore, second by Commissioner Bryan. Board discussion, anyone in the audience? Opposition? Motion passes four and oh.
Mr. Chairman, the last item on the half-cent sales tax and your work with Sacred Heart each year, as I mentioned before, you pledged $417,000 in your ACHA agreement last year. Your memorandum of understanding had $462,000 last year and this, which was a reduced amount that you agreed to with Mr. Hall and Sacred Heart. Last year, the county funded that 417 per that Lip Agreement and the LOA. However, the MOU called for 462,000. The funds are there. It's just underfunded last year. We have a request from Sacred Heart to honor the MOU that you've put in place and signed. It's a difference of the 462 for last year and the 417,000 that the county currently has funded for the last fiscal year. So we ask for your permission and to direct the clerk's office to provide that additional pledge that you've already approved to bring up that shortfall from last fiscal year.
Let me, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner McLemore, second by Commissioner Smiley. Any other board discussion on adjustment? Anyone in the audience? Not, there's no opposition? Motion passes four and oh. Ms. Norris, you, you'll take care of that for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Butler, we go back to you.
Mr. Chairman, next item is White City Fire Station. Put in front of board today, the request and ask your opinion, no, your opinion, your consideration, make a change order. The change order would be to reduce Kathy's contract, White City Fire Station, by $64,527.16.
What was that number? Six, four, thousand?
Sixty-four thousand, five, twenty-seven, sixteen. And the reason for that is we're asking for your consideration to make a direct purchase for the building and for the concrete and the savings to Gulf County. It's going to be to the fire station, there's going to be the sales tax on those two items. It's not a lot of money, but it is a savings of money. And for the board's consideration to allow us to make those two direct purchases, we'll back the $64,000 plus dollars out of their contract. We will, we will pay for the building, pay for the concrete and save the sales tax. And if the board's okay with that, we'd like to move forward.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bryan, second by Commissioner McLemore. Any other board discussion on? Anyone from the audience? White City Fire Station? Opposition? Passes four and oh.
Just, just comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Sixty-four thousand dollars, a lot of money to me.
Oh, yeah.
The savings is about $3,200 is the difference in sales.
It's a difference. Sales tax.
That's still a lot of money.
Okay, Mr. Butler, you still have?
Same item, White City. I've got to pick out this number, the, we have a pay request, application number two. And I'm going to recommend this to you to pay contingent upon Lee Collinsworth being the project manager, signing off on it. The amount, I'll go review, picking that out real quick, the amount.
Looks like $60,565.
A request for $60,565. $65,400. Recommendation is let Lee Collinsworth, project manager, sign off on it before, before we pay it.
Let me, Mr. Chairman. All right. Motion by Commissioner McLemore. Second by Commissioner Smiley. Any other board? Anyone from the audience? Collinsworth? Is and tees, okay? All right, thank you. All right, no opposition? Motion passes four and oh.
Mr. Chairman, also, last item on White City Fire Station, for the board's consideration, we're recommending that we add another 90 days to the contract for consideration of all the rain we had and the problem we had and we had to remove material, soil that we didn't plan on removing, had to haul it back in and had to be compacted and, and soil had to be retested, but neither board, the board had another 90 days to the contract.
Let me.
Motion for 90-day extension? Second by Commissioner Smiley, second by Commissioner McLemore. Any other full board discussion on this? Anyone from the audience? Opposition? Motion passes four and oh for the 90-day extension. All right.
Mr. Chairman, next item is Restore Act Consultant. Item I put in front of you last board meeting, you know, determined to need a little more time to study it. Meantime, we did, we did send a copy of the, of the two proposals we received to all the Commissioners. The recommendation is that Dewberry Consultants LLC be awarded the contract to be paid from Restore monies to, to put in place or develop our multi-year implementation plan and some other things that we need done that can be paid from Restore. And two, recommendation is that Erin Diddy, that we contract with Erin Diddy for, not to exceed the amount of $5,000, not necessarily to be paid for by Restore money, but for some technical, technical assistance. We have, Erin Diddy's attorney had a very good proposal. Not as, not as in-depth as Dewberry, but we have, in dealing with Erin Diddy, dealing with Restore, we found she's very influential in dealing with the Treasury, getting those rules set. Most of her recommendations with Treasury that was up in the air was accepted by Treasury. So recommendation is that we, we contract with Dewberry to do our NYIP and also we contract with Erin Diddy for the technical assistance we may need as, as time goes on, but not to exceed $5,000.
Motion by Commissioner McLemore. By Commissioner Smiley. Any other board discussion?
I have discussion.
You have the floor.
After reviewing the proposals and thank you for sending those for review, it appears to me that Dewberry is a good, a good fit for this Restore Consultant. I don't see, after reviewing what Dewberry has done, what they're currently doing, they're a large company, I don't see the need for Ms. Diddy. I think she also submitted a, a very good proposal and had Dewberry not bid, then she would have been, been a good alternative. She's an attorney. I know of her in, in the legal community and she has a very good reputation. However, I, I don't think that we need to enter into that additional contract at this time. It is county dollars, not Restore money. And I think that if we, we end up in a situation where Dewberry can't handle the work, we could always enter into a contract with her at that time. So I, I'm against entering into both contracts. I, I am for entering into, well, into negotiations with Dewberry.
All right, we have a motion on, any, any other discussion? One from the audience? Call for the vote, then. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes? All right, motion pass. Three to one.
Mr. Chairman, next item is the EMS billing contract. I will ask Houston to give me a hand on this and Mr. Attorney to give me a hand on this, but part of this is, is more than one point to it. We, we went through the, this year, the current year, in, in order to develop the current budget that, that we started on back in the, in March, in February, in March, and multiple meetings on the budget throughout the year. And we, that was a consideration and the county commissioner agreed to go out and look for private firms to run EMS. We received proposal, a proposal, and in the end, we determined that the best fit for Gulf County is to allow the Gulf County EMS to continue running the amateur service. Houston done a great job, has, has done a fabulous job with it. And, but meantime, we, we have a billing company that, that bills for us. And in that contract, and I'm not even sure exactly when the end of that contract is, but we need, we need to at, at least extend the contract to give us enough time to RFP or another one or extend it to a period of time. We didn't know if we was going to go private, we were going to stay in-house. We wound up staying in-house. Best thing we, I mean, we did the best thing to be done. But, but on our, our billing contract, I let Mr. Attorney, he's, he's got more details on it than I do on, on, if we need to extend to a certain point of time before we RFP, we need to do it.
All right, sir.
Commissioners, if you recall, you extended EMS consultants twice in the past year as you all considered privatizing and reviewed your EMS. The most recent extension was back in April. You authorized Mr. Whitfield to sign the extension that would carry us through this month. So currently, you are, have an, you're going to be having an expired contract with EMS billing consultants. Grant Patterson, the CEO of EMS Consultants, has been very cooperative. I'd ask if you would provide us the ability to extend them through the end of January. That would give Brett and Mr. Whitfield the opportunity to develop the appropriate advertisements and RFP. We can advertise, solicit new bids, and then ideally have you all award a contract at the second meeting in January. But we'll need two authorizations, one to go out to bid after it's been developed and the second to authorize Mr. Whitfield or Mr. Butler to execute the contract extension through the end of January.
Houston, you all right with that?
Let me move forward, Mr. Chairman.
All right, sir. Motion by Commissioner McLemore.
I second.
Second by Commissioner Smiley. Any other board discussion? Anyone from the audience on this? Houston, you have anything to, on this?
I have something else to bring up.
Okay, all right, we'll do that.
Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I, I do want to make sure that we go out for bids on this, Houston, so, so let's be prepared, you know, for that.
All right. Want to hear some of the audience? Any opposition? No opposition? Motion passes four and oh.
Mr. Chairman. T, already taken care of. L, G is the Solo Contract Welcome Guide Printing Agreement. I think we have a, we need the chairman to signature on that agreement and I'm not sure we have a vote on it or not.
You draw mine on G?
On G.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think, I think Jennifer signed the agreement and we need to, we need to get the chairman to sign the agreement.
All right, let's just do it.
Yes.
Motion on.
Let me, Mr. Chairman.
I second.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner McLemore, second. Authorize, signature, any opposition from the board? Any one from the public? Not, no opposition? Motion passes four and oh. All right.
Mr. Chairman, H is next, Pay Study. I put the Pay Study in front of you before and, and the board decided to hold off on it, wait on it. Again, I'm putting it in front of you. Your consideration of, of a pay and classification study to determine where your employees are. We, we've, we've had somewhat of studies done when, when the money was free coming from the state and we did it for a few years. It was like every other year for three or four times, but it was not an in-depth study. And we would like to, we need to determine the, what they call the internal equity and external equity and where we are in the world. Are we on point, off point? Where, where should we be? And recommendation is for your consideration, taking the negotiated rate that we had negotiated with Evergreen. Denise and I had, had dealt with Evergreen. We had four proposals and the county commissioner allowed us to go back and negotiate down from $30,000 to $4,000 we could, and I think we wound up at $22,000. So recommendation that we be able to go out and have that pay and class study done and award the bid to Evergreen Solutions LLC out of Tallahassee.
Mr. Trevor Green out of Tallahassee, all right. Okay. All right. Commissioner McLemore, you're recognized.
Okay. Since our last meeting, our last time we discussed this issue here, I've had an opportunity to really do some research on this. And Mr. Butler's correct. I don't think there's anybody sitting in this room, really and truly, that can come here professionally and do a true cost of what a, just an example, road grader operator should be making today. I don't think there's anybody out here that can do that. These professionals can come in here and do this for us and that'll let us know next year what we need to budget for, what we need to look for and, and move forward. So I'm in highly support for this study. I'm making a motion that we do it.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McLemore, second by Commissioner Smiley. Now, we're open, board discussion. Anyone on the board?
We have never done an in-depth pay study. The last one, I think we had done, which was, didn't cost us anything, the, the small county technical assistance service program did about three, probably at least three for us every other year, and I think last one was about 2007. I may be off a little bit on that time, but about 2007. And it didn't go in depth like what we really need. And we, we really need to know where we stand.
If, if, Mr. Chairman, if you'll get your print out, Commissioners, get your print out, every employee that we have, we're so out of whack with this pay scale. I, I mean, you'd have to sit down and look at it and study it, but this company, professionals, whatever, they'll come in and, and give us some guidance on where we need to be at.
Motion? Second, any further discussion on it? Anyone from the audience? Well, opposition? Motion passes four and oh for the study. All right. Butler.
Mr. Chairman, also put slash pay raise on, on that line and asking for the board's consideration. It's going to take months to get this pay classification study done and in place. Your consideration of the pay raise for the county employees this year, retroactive the first day of October. If you, if you gave a, a 3% pay raise, we would, we'd have to identify where the money comes from. We can, we can take a harder look at the EMS budget. We, we did not cut that at the end of the year, trying to give us more time to figure out really it is going to work out between that budget and, and another really if it's going to work out between that budget and another budget. Maybe we can find the money if the board will consider a three percent pay raise for county employees.
Now, Mr. Chairman.
You have the floor.
This is another issue or an item that we looked at strongly during our budget sessions. At that time, we just, we didn't know if we were going to have the money or not. I feel strongly now that we're going to have the money. I support this, three percent.
Motion in that?
Yeah, motion.
Motion by Commissioner McLemore for the three percent be raised. Your second. Second by Commissioner Smiley. Other board discussion? Anyone from the audience?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Yes, all right, we recognize.
Does this include your constitutional officers as well?
Yes.
For the record? Okay. Thank you.
Across the board. It'd be across the board.
Thank you.
Board funding, every position's board funding.
Yes.
Including sheriff department. Oh, okay. Recognize, Commissioner Ryan.
I'm just wondering, Commissioner McLemore, you said that you do feel confident that we will have the funds. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, I think we've done a lot of adjustment out of EMS budget, and that's where it's going to come.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anyone from the public? Opposition? All right, this motion passes four and oh. That's back to October one. October one. It's October, okay, fiscal year. Okay, Mr. Butler.
Mr. Chairman, next item, Indian Lagoon Restore Act, had a conversation with Mr. McLemore, is desire to have some, maybe look at Indian Lakes Lagoon, do something similar in that area that Franklin County's doing in the shelling and trying to get the oysters to come back. And Mr. McLemore can say it better than I can, but looking at probably putting this issue in front of the county local Restore Act committee, and working up a plan, and eventually, whether it be Part One, Part Two, Part Three money, trying to order some grant money, state money, like Franklin County got for the re-shelling program, to try to do something to enhance the Indian Lagoon area. Mr. McLemore said it better than I can.
Yeah. All right, let me recognize Commissioner McLemore, and he's involved in this pretty heavily.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and the board members, there's two things to this, really and truly. Number one, the most important thing is getting the lagoon back up where it should be. I mean, the oyster population, I'm there daily, you know, and we have people in the audience out there that's there daily, and it's took a bad hit, you know, also like in Franklin County. So, Franklin County, they're bringing all this money in, you know, into Franklin County to redo their beds. Well, the lagoons in Gulf County, we need to do the same thing. And what that would do for us, that'd help our oysters maybe, and put people to work. You know, I'd like the EDC to get in behind this, and let's see where we can go. It may be, I don't know the right avenue, you know, to take with this, but it may be to where we could piggyback on to some of Franklin County's program that they have operating now, but just want to move forward with this and as fast-paced as we can. This is critical now. I can tell you, I'm there, I've been there and there all my life in lagoon, and it's in bad shape. So, you know, I would motion to move forward with this, and let's see what we can do. And two, like I said, I want really, Mr. Butler, get EDC involved with this, development council. I want to get everybody that's out there that's available, involved with this program. I want them to get on board with it, get on board with it, with myself, and let's work and see what we can do with it.
All right, I know you threw, Commissioner. All right. Maybe we can get FWC involved in this, and I agree with you, Commissioner McLemore, we do have people in Gulf County oyster up where I live, and we have people up there that oyster, some far living, some to supplement there. And hopefully, while they're doing this program, it's the reason why they shouldn't come to Gulf County. That's a great oyster, what would you call it, nursery, or it produces good oysters in that area there that we don't. Well, after this, so we'll go from there. All right. Anyone else? Question for the people up there. You've got your motion on the floor, it's correct.
I second that.
All right, we got a second by Commissioner Smiley. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone from the audience on Indian Lagoons? Dr. Hardman, please.
Commissioner McLemore, we really appreciate your bringing this up. Pat Hardman, Coastal Community Association. I was wondering why Franklin got so much help for their oyster people, and we weren't in that pot. And I really appreciate you bringing it up, and if there's anything we can do to help you, we certainly will, sir.
I appreciate that. Don't answer your question.
Yes, sir.
Because we've sat here and done nothing. We failed. We should have been on top of this from day one.
I don't think we kind of think oystering or as much as we do fishing or scalping in this county, and yet that lagoon is, used to be rich, used to be rich. So, we appreciate your bringing it up and thinking about it, yes, sir.
I'm going to need all the help I can get. Just like I said, you know, we need to get everybody involved with this program, that we can get involved with it, and let's see where we can go with it.
I think this is wanting to go to Tallahassee and see if we can piggyback. I think your idea of piggybacking is an excellent idea.
Well, Mr. Jaeger, unfortunately, he's not here today, but really and truly, I want to go with Mr. Jaeger with this. You know, he can help us a lot with this program, so let's see where it goes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Hardman. Before we call for the vote, Commissioner Ryan, you're recognized.
Could we just clarify the motion before we vote?
My motion would be to move forward with trying to find a program, dollars, grant dollars, Restore dollars, where we can get dollars at, and to get everybody involved, FWC, whoever it may be, that we can get involved with this and try to...
In a way, we can get some help.
Yeah, in a way, we can get some help. That's my motion.
All right. You have that, Ms. Roberts? Motion? All right, thank you. All right. Other board discussion on this? Anyone from the audience? If not, motion passes four and oh.
Chairman, all items on your agenda have been taken care of. I do have another item I need to talk to you about. It's an emergency item, which could be considered an emergency item.
All right, let's address it.
I received a letter yesterday, after, less than 24 hours before this meeting, from Houston EMS, and Houston can say it better than I can, but he's got a cardiac monitor that has gone down.
Oh, yeah.
And with the cardiac monitor down, that means we have a truck down, and it's going to take a while. It's going to take probably three or four weeks if, once we order it, to get one in. And we need Mr. Attorney to help us out on this, too. It's not on the agenda, but if we have to declare an emergency and move forward on it, we don't need to wait too many weeks to make an order and then have to wait three or four weeks to get it in and have a truck down that period of time. And Houston, if you will, you can say it better than I can.
All right, let me ask a question here. This monitors on one of your ALS ambulances. ALS ambulance requires this.
This is a requirement, I mean, you cannot treat a patient without it.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
These particular monitors meet all the state requirements. They're also set up to transport EKGs, transmit EKGs to receiving hospitals, so we can let them know that we have a STEMI coming in, which is a major heart attack. And in most cases, we go right straight from the ER door to the cath lab by using this system. This area has a system of transmitting which we're under contract with a physio control. That means that all the monitors have to be compatible with physio control. All our other monitors we have on our trucks are physio controls. The one that went out is a physio control.
How old was that?
It was built in 1990. We purchased it reconditioning in 2002, so we had good service out of it. We had a rep come by and check it out. It's going to cost at least five thousand dollars to fix it. They don't make that monitor anymore all the parts for, so we're just taking a chance that it may go out again any time. So, what I'm recommending is to buy a IPAC-15, which we already have three on our trucks now. It's the latest version of it. They've offered to give us five thousand dollars trade-in on the one we have, and the last sheet there shows you the total price, twenty-two thousand nine twenty, with a discount, a state discount, and a trade-in allowance. This is a single-source item, and I'm getting a letter on that from the manufacturer stating that.
Good move.
I'm asking permission at this time to go ahead and purchase this. We have about a 30-day delivery on it, and hopefully, they might have a loan that they could let us use meantime to get this truck back on the...
Okay, motion by Commissioner McLemore.
Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Brian.
Commissioners, if I can ask you just to include in your...
Sure, sure. I got my motion second now, we'll discuss.
If you could, including your motion, three steps, which is, one, you are going to suspend your current requirement for the 24-hour notice in light of the fact that this has been brought to your attention and the administrators within the last 24 hours. The second would be to include your motion to amend your agenda so that it is included in today's action items. And then the third is that you all state that it is an emergency. I mean, it's time-sensitive, it's sole source, and you also, for public safety purposes, it's appropriate to take action on it today. But I'd ask you to include those three steps in your motion as well, so it's appropriate and authorized.
You want a separate motion for those three steps, or just...
Unless you find them inappropriate, if you can include all three steps in your motion.
Have any questions? Can you, or no? No, no, okay.
Motion to approve all three steps.
Okay, with it, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I missed getting that third step.
Okay, let's get there.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
I got the first two, I just...
The third step is for the public safety in the emergency situation, the fact that it is sole source, and they've declared an emergency under their county policy, that they can't take action today on this item.
Thank you.
Okay, we're all clear. Thank you, Houston. All right, the motion taken by Commissioner Brian, other board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience? Any question on this? Opposition, then this motion passes four and oh. Butler, we'll go back to you. You have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to go home, Mr. Chairman.